One here in person. So what we're gonna do is let's just kind of run around the room.
Do a motion to open.
Oh, let's do a motion. Oh.
I can, yes.
Okay, so we'll do a motion to open ours and then we'll turn it over to Ms. Thompson and you can do a roll call to get your group.
Sounds good. So I'm looking for a motion to establish the agenda.
Second it.
And all in favor of moving the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All five board directors are present.
Turn it over to you for your order.
Thank you. I'm going to connect the roll call for council. Councilmember Antol is in a different meeting. Councilmember Jacobson.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds. Now, Councilmember Wicker?
Yeah.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Here.
Stephanie Mary Rosenbaum?
Here.
And Mary.
Here. And Reynolds is in another meeting as well.
All right. Well, welcome all again. My boss didn't give me all of the things I needed to do first, so I missed.
Coming back to be on the fly.
All right. So we'll just run around the room with a quick introduction and we have a lot on the agenda to chat about, so I want to save most of our time for that. So just again, Deborah Lurie, President of the School Board, this is my seventh year serving on the board.
Dan Loewitz, Vice President, third year.
Jody Lee, first year, lead director.
Christina Martinez, first year, two or three months on the job.
Two years, first year.
Wendy Wiger, it's been a while.
Ted Weinberg, City Council, in my third year.
I'm Katie Thompson. I'm Jesse Bonds, Executive Assistant.
Matt Morton, Finance Director, I've been with the city since March twenty twenty.
Selene Nice, Mayor, I've been on City Council since twenty seventeen.
Dave Rosenbaum, Deputy Mayor, this is my fifth year. Head Home Police Chief for the city thirty years.
Terrific Fund Administrator, Department of Youth and Family Services, nineteen years.
Twenty-three, I guess, Operations Director, thirty-five years.
Matt Sullivan, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, year and a half.
Aaron, I'm the Executive Director of Compliance and Overtakes and Research for the District, and you're in this may here.
Maggie Tye.
Yeah, I'm Maggie Tye Tucker, and sorry for not being there in person. I'm in Florida for our conference right now, and this is my fifth year on the board.
And Andries, we have Jason Kittner, I think. Yep, there's Jason.
Hi, Jason Kittner, Chief of Operations, I've been with the city since two thousand and five.
Michelle.
Oh, I'm Michelle Miller. I'm President of the District.
Ian Henry, Communications Coordinator, two years in the district.
Andrew Johnson, Attorney Director, I think this is my thirteenth year here with the district.
And Fred Arnold, Superintendent, in my second year and a half.
You know what, this has been on the agenda, but I just want to, we know this is our last meeting session with Chief Holmes, and really just want to acknowledge your commitment to our community and thanking for your many years of service. When we talk to our students about the fact that you were our first ever SRO, it's always a, oh, that's cool, which is amazing. I mean, it's amazing in this day and age to have that response from teenagers about a police officer in the community, and it's heartwarming. And so I know that matters to you too, but I want you to know that we hear it and we see it. And when we meet with our colleagues around the state and there's concerns about policing and students, it's like, not our issue. We have an amazing relationship with our police department. They make our students feel safe and secure, and we know that that's who they go to for help, and we know that's an extraordinary large part due to you. So you will be missed, but I have every confidence that your legacy will live on in our community, and so thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So we had a chance to meet yesterday, we being the City Manager, myself, and then the Mayor, Deputy Mayor, President, Vice President, just to make sure we kind of had an effective agenda. And so we'll dive right in here and start off, and I'm just going to tee up the conversation around the first topic of mutual entrance, which is our interlocal agreements. You know, if you look at the history of these, you know, they ebb and flow, and they continue to be in process as we work together. But I won't speak for my counterpart, City Manager Bond, but I know as a superintendent, it is a lot easier just to have one City Manager who I'm working with, one Police Chief, and one Mayor than it is for some of the other school districts. And I hope the same is for her, of being able to work with the district. But I think it's, as I've seen it evolve, just the partnerships that we have. So just as a quick reminder, we have the Merry Way Pool, interlocal, we have the South Mercer Playfields and Sportsfields, we have our School Resource Officer, our Fuel Purchase Agreements, our MIYFS Counselors. And then outside of that, we have some emergency things, that if there are emergent issues, we already have partnerships on how we're going to work together to best serve this community. And I think the interlocals serve our taxpayers well, I think they serve our students well, I hope they serve the entire community well. So the first thing I would just say is just a huge appreciation. On the Merry Way Pool side, just a quick update there, the King County did give us a grant for $2 million for capital improvements. We are still waiting on all of the logistics on that. But that ongoing commitment from the city to help with operating costs, we're going to put in another $2 million from the CapTech levy. So over the next several years, we'll be putting another investment into that facility for our community. So with that, I think, you know, interlocals are approved and discussed at the council and board tables. However, they're really run a lot by the operations teams. And so why don't I first open it up, council or board, if you want to talk, and then we can have Jason and others in our team fill in any details.
On the floor?
Any of the interlocals, or questions, or thoughts, or commendations?
Anyone have any questions or thoughts on any of the interlocals? I know that we do leave them, we discussed yesterday how we do really leave them to operations. I think the partnerships, our community appreciates and expects the city and the district to be partnering on our community resources. It's obviously we share a tax base, we share a community, we share all of our members, which is a unique and amazing opportunity to be able to do so. So we appreciate the give and take very much in terms of the extraordinary benefit that MIYFS and the counselors being in the school and the huge amount of support that the city provides for that, which we could not do without that support at all. And we also, we know that it's the gold standard of providing for our students where they are. We notice it every day and are still appreciative of the partnership, like I said, about the SRO as well. And then being able to do the fun things, the playfields, the pool, the, you know, being able to rely on the fact that the city has a park and rec department, the school isn't set up that way, we're not funded that way, and can really rely on each other's strengths in order to best meet the needs of our community. So having said that, does anyone have any questions, or concerns, or highlights, or, you know, ideas moving forward in terms of ways that we can work on improving? You know, as we're, as we're all looking, this is a little bit in the next agenda item, but looking at the long-range facility planning and knowing that we're each doing some big things in the future, being able to work together and make sure that we're using the strengths of each other in our future planning.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback off what Deborah said and highlight to you there, MIYFS. I think it's something that everyone in the community is aware of, but maybe not to the extent of how unique it is. And I think it's a clear example of government doing well, addressing an urgent need, and showing that it can work across departments to solve a common problem. Particularly with mental health and the challenges these days, that's all the more important. And so to reiterate what Deborah said, thank you very much for that partnership and for the vital services that are provided.
Well, I think we probably can't go any further without mentioning the MIYFS Foundation. You know, it's, this may be a partnership, and we may be providing the counseling resources for the schools, and you may be subsidizing that cost within our local. But it's the foundation, which is really, you know, the backbone of that is the residents of Mercer Island and the generous giving that they do each year, the fundraisers that you and your teams put together along with the foundation. And then the thrift shop, you know, the Mercer Islanders are constantly upcycling, recycling, rebuying. I think I've donated stuff and realized that I still needed that and bought it back.
That's how it is when you have. So these are the wheels that keep things churning, and so everybody helps make that go around, and it's great partnership to have.
I just want to say that I have experienced to have lived in different places in the world, and I think that Mercer Island is very unique because we have a school that partners with the city. And I think the city, it is what it is because this partnership works. And it's different from Seattle, from Bellevue, so I appreciate this winning that we do together to make this community what it is.
I have a question, I just, actually, a little more specific about that, the grant and the financial pool. What's, what's the, what will be that money be spent? Tony, I know we've been so focused on architects and other things recently, we haven't really reviewed that, but I know that's one more you will.
We really haven't phoned it down to what the full scope of the work will be. It will likely be a liner, it will be some exterior work on the building. We recently did the HBC and the emulation, so we got that done. We're hoping to do some work in the locker rooms. Once we get the grant secured, the fund secured, kind of see how far we can stretch the dollar.
Okay. The first grant, we, this is the second of two grants. The first one was a planning grant. And I don't remember the amount on that one, but it allowed us to bring in a bunch of experts to look at the facility, provide the overall, here are all the things you need to do. And, you know, the county wanted us to agree to keeping the pool going for thirty years with their $2 million investment. We told them we could do it for ten, probably not thirty, because it's going to need more than that. But yeah, we've got a list of things and we'll take a look at those. Thanks. Tony or Matt, anything else on, on any of the interlocals that you want to?
I think all in all, we're working closely with Jason Kittner. We continue to revisit these throughout the year, keeping them updated. We recently, I think we've got finishing touches on the fuel interlocal, which will probably be coming to the council and board in the next, in the next couple of weeks, we're reading. And then we'll continue to work our way through. I think our next one will likely be the ball fields will be our next. The next one we'll want to tackle. So it'll take some time and just trying to get calendars to work and the right people in the room at the right time to get through it. So it does take time. We've got a great relationship on both sides. We're working really closely together. We're continuing to keep things up and running, whether this thing is a hundred percent accurate, but we're definitely working our way through.
As a, as a transition, I just want to acknowledge, you know, our, just kind of update the fact that we changed our enrollment policy last spring to include all of city employees, you know, from adding to MIYFS employees, and are really excited about that additional partnership. I believe that last I heard, we have three families that are taking advantage of that, and we know it was late in the season to make those decisions for their children. So we're hoping that we continue to see city employees and hopefully as, as people come back to Mercer Island to work, that take advantage. We really looking for ways to include all of our community in our schools, and we very much appreciate that relationship. And, you know, please, I'm sure the word has spread, but, but we're happy to, you know, this was, this was a no-brainer. This was, of course, it's members of our community, and we want to support that and be able to offer those privileges to city employees as well. So looking forward to seeing how that grows in the future as well. So we can move on.
Sure. You know, I was doing a little bit of research, refreshing my mind on long-range facilities from your standpoint and ours, and forgot how closely we were building kind of our elementary schools when City Hall was being built, and then the renovation in the late eighties, and we did ours in the mid nineties. And so we're both, we're both in some positions to be thinking about our facilities. So Mayor, why don't I start with you in terms of, you had the, you reminded me about your March update that you would just have in your comprehensive plan. Why don't I yield the floor to you all to start off with? Where do you want?
Well, council has been in the, in the throes of the long-range facilities plan since before the City Hall was shuttered due to the asbestos findings. Once we, you know, found that there was asbestos, we had to start investigating what was the source. We determined there were multiple kind of areas in the building that were impacted by asbestos, and one thing led to another, and it was pretty clear that trying to remediate asbestos was going to be more the value of the building, given the age and the spread of asbestos and multiple air ducts and multiple ceilings. And so we made the decision to shutter that building in October last year. Since that time, we've continued our facilities assessments. We've obviously had a lot of interest in the Public Works Building, which is the building that sits behind City Hall. It was, I think, the first building with a living roof in Washington State, and it shows because there are a lot of waste containers and garbage cans collecting the water that comes through that roof into the offices below. So the council, in its planning session, passed a motion to direct the City Manager to return to the council in Q2 of this year with a proposal for a combined public safety and maintenance building that would be sited somewhere on that City Hall campus site. That site has two large parcels. There's the front parcel that everybody's familiar with where City Hall resides, and there's a very large back parcel that is the maintenance parcel. None of it's really optimized, but the city maintains a fairly large fleet between police and maintenance, and with all the equipment, snowplows and things like that. And while we did look islandwide for opportunities to site a facility like that, there really isn't a better opportunity than that site. So the council is going to hopefully have some really preliminary numbers and scope on what a building like that might cost later in the year. And while we're still looking at facilities islandwide for the city, our focus is very much on public safety and maintenance. The council further directed the City Manager to continue to look at a civic functioning portion of City Hall and Town Center. We have a lot of customer-facing prospects to the city, with the municipal court, the City Council, the community planning and development. They have YFS and all of their youth counseling and adult counseling services, food pantries, things like that. Any of these civic customer-facing functions are somewhat being reserved for a possible location in Town Center, although nothing's been identified. And so we're continuing to march forward the best we can. City council meetings are being held at the Community Center for the foreseeable future, but we're back in person, which is a great, great thing to have. In terms of comprehensive planning, the city is in the midst of its ten-year comprehensive plan update. So is every other municipal government in King County across the state of Washington, including King County. We did talk briefly in our planning meeting about housing and the housing element of the comprehensive plan. There are a lot of things I've seen kind of tangentially discussed at the school board about enrollment and housing and kids, and what might the future of housing be able to do to generate enrollment for the district. The legislature passed Health Bill eleven-ten last session. That's a missing middle housing bill that is going to require cities across Washington to allow middle housing in all residential zones. So you're going to see some more gentle redevelopment in residential zones after we pass that code by June of next year, which will allow up to two middle housing units per lot. Right now Mercer Island already allows an ADU and a DADU, so you essentially have two units per lot. But this might create a little bit more opportunity for two properties to be sold to two different people, which is typically not the case with an ADU and a DADU. Beyond that, Mercer Island's growth management housing target has been impacted by legislation passed in 2021, which was Hospital twelve-twenty, which did two things. It passed racially disparate impacts that made us look at housing and housing displacement gentrification, and do things to either stop doing that or unwind gentrification that's happened in the past. Beyond that, affordable housing became the highlight of twelve-twenty, which said that every municipality should plan for and accommodate affordable housing at multiple area median income bands. And those bands are typically zero to thirty percent, thirty-one, fifty percent, fifty-one to eighty percent, eighty to a hundred, and then market rate housing. I only mention this because this is really a big pivot for Mercer Island for housing for the next twenty years, because Mercer Island's allocation of housing is now almost exclusively affordable housing for the next twenty years. So all of the development codes, the density in Town Center, the incentives, anything that we could pass is going to be around trying to develop units that are at the fifty percent AMI and below, although we do have a portion that are in that fifty-one to eighty percent band. So as we look at that plan and how we can implement it, it just entered the Planning Commission last night. I handed it off. So I don't think anybody has a crystal ball to tell you what that might look like and how much, how many children might get generated out of a plan like that over the next twenty years, but I won't tell. I think that everybody in Washington is kind of holding their breath thinking, if there's no funding for the support of housing, this is going to be a very large planning exercise and not a lot of actual housing. But we'll do what we can to create incentives and produce units that, you know, yield that the market can bear.
Thanks for the update, Mayor. Why don't we, any discussion on that or conversation?
What is AMI currently? Yeah, so AMI in King County is about a hundred thousand dollars. And so when I say a fifty percent AMI unit, it's a person making fifty thousand dollars and then spending no more than thirty percent of that fifty thousand, including all of their bills except their phone bill, on their housing. So you can imagine that, you know, these rents would be far below market rates in Mercer Island.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
And so we'll turn it over to President, Vice President, who've been part of the LRFP process all the way through, and bring us up to speed on where we are.
So just to take you back to where we were, we did start, we're not mandated by law to do any sort of comprehensive planning like the city does. So we hadn't even been doing it despite the need. And back in, gosh, when I first came on the board, started talking about creating a long-range facility plan, which we did, and we're finishing, we finished the first round of it really just as COVID came into our lives. And so that kind of turned everything up on its end. We weren't able to go out to the community to talk about what the committee had found and really looked at all the status of our facilities, what enrollment was doing, and, and, you know, kind of make choices as, we were really focused at that point in time in terms of a priority list of what do we need to do first, rather than anything more concrete. It was, it was a very general, like, here are the things that need to be done, and here's kind of the priority of what's going to be done first when we, when we are able to do it. And when we came back together last year, we started, you know, a secondary. And the intention is that the long-range plan is a living, a living document, so that we, the board takes a look at it every year and we update it as needed. Well, based on all the significant unanticipated changes that COVID brought us, the, the decision was to bring back a new committee and kind of go through the process again, but with a little bit of a different focus of really kind of planning for a future bond. As you all know, we've got some very, very, very aging facilities on the island that really are at a point where, where if we don't do something, we're going to be spending more on, on trying to maintain than, than what would, than it would cost to build new, frankly, despite the hard work of Tony and his team that have kept things together with Scotch tape and probably chewing gum is up, right? But we're at the point where that's just not feasible. And so the long-range facility plan, as I know you know, you know, there were, there were some recommendations that we took out to the community, the community resound and we said, no, thank you in terms of school consolidations. And everyone was very happy right now with the status quo of having four elementary schools and giving more opportunity for, for that, you know, recovery of the, I call the COVID trauma of the, the families with very young children who really went through, you know, a very different kind of trauma than those of us with older kids who were a little bit more self-sufficient and able to have their schooling in a little bit of a better way than the little guys who, I know when they came back to school, their teachers were describing them as feral cats. And I think now they're just kind of like kittens that are running amok. So we're making a lot of progress, but we very clearly heard, give us more time. We need more stability and, and understand that position. That being said, the facilities committee came back together and said, okay, then now what's next? And so we, the board has now directed the superintendent and staff to, well, the superintendent, to bring contracts, proposed contracts, working with an architecture firm or firms, really focusing on completing the middle school and taking care of some larger educational needs at the high school. TBD in terms of what those specifically will be, but, but that are too big for capital projects to do. Things, for example, could be science classroom labs, robotic labs. We need the crest, whether that's separate or whatever, those are things. The stadium has some infrastructure issues. The Performing Arts Center, the.
Locker rooms.
Locker rooms, lots of things. But it's all, it's all in an educational, you know, really doing a deep dive with the staff and learning what the needs are there that we can better meet the education needs of our, of our high school students. So we've learned over time, smaller bites at one time is what this community is more willing to bear. We also know that the city is going to be asking for things, you know, probably around the same timeline. We're very cognizant of that as well. So we're kind of looking, I think, at some similar timelines at this point in time. You know, a goal without even having these contracts in place yet to do the process. We really are learning from what we did, you know, a decade plus ago in terms of the failed bond is really going out with a very specific plans, cost, budget, and parameters in the bonds to be very clear. This is what we're asking for, and this is what it's going to do. And this is frankly what it's going to look like. And so, and this is who it's going to impact. Obviously, we're going to take into account the change in enrollment numbers, our budgets, we're going to talk about, explore the sustainability options, environmental impacts. We've got some new legislation in terms of the sustainable environmental impacts that we have to do some upgrades. So what do we have to do? What do we want to do? And, and have some ADA things in terms of access at Crest and some of the other buildings. So that's what we're really looking at. But this next year, we're going to be looking to going out to the community, meeting with staff, meeting with our community members, meeting with our students, and really assessing the needs and making some very specific plans for what we then hope to go out to the community, assuming we're all able to make a plan that go to the community and ask for a bond next April is right now what the goal is. But again, it's all determinate on how that planning process goes. So nothing's set in stone, nothing has been decided. We haven't even entered yet into contracts with our architecture firms who are going to be leading us in that process. So very much is up for discussion and suggestions. And there's a huge portion of the next year where we will be, a huge portion that's tasked with, with Brandy and Tony and their teams in terms of going out to the community to be doing, to be doing these assessments and desires. And, you know, we really look at us, what do we want, what do we need, and what do we have to do? And so really kind of determining it based on that. We are, our current bond, I don't know if you've heard Dr. Reynolds talk about it, but we were able to refi our bond thanks to the tremendous work of Matt and his team, saving our taxpayers a million and a half dollars just by restructuring the end of the bond, which is amazing. And it took a lot of work, but it didn't really take anything else. So it's really just making the best use of our taxpayer dollars. And then really what our goal right now is to really try and have, as we know, that there's several elementary schools that need to be rebuilt or updated, the middle school and then the high school. You know, potentially that admin building is part of that crest, maintenance on operations, everything that needs to be looked at, really being able to provide a predictable path forward for our taxpayers and really being able to structure bonds without waiting twenty years in between each project, because we can't with all of our, or we can't. Then really being able to allow our taxpayers and community to plan for the future, know what's coming, and know how their taxes are going to be impacted, and really try and maintain the transparency and the predictability for our tax base. So that being said, all of that other stuff is up in the air in terms of decision-making, but those are our plans, and I'll let anyone add anything to it that they'd like.
Yeah, I guess to, you know, the highlight.
Yeah, I guess to, you know, the highlight, uh, Deborah's last point, which may be a little bit different. I'm not sure what's typical for, for cities and municipalities. But for school districts, it can be quite common to stack bonds, um, which is something that I wasn't fully aware of, of before joining the school district. So it's not just the immediate bond that might be issued in the near future, but then how that fits into the larger landscape of bonds. And what was projected to be the long-term debt load, you know, leases applied to median households. So that might be a little bit different than perhaps the world in which you live, in which it's one bond for, you know, that, that wouldn't be stacked. It would just be a single bond. Um, but I don't know what's typical for city, but for school districts, multiple bonds are more common. And then figuring out the big picture is what we're in the, the midst of now.
Do you want to mention the construction?
Oh, yeah. The other thing that I think that's, you know, worthwhile to point out is we're thinking of school construction. There was a proposal at the state level. Um, uh, House Bill or Senate Bill fifty-seven eighty-nine, uh, flew through, um, the Senate, it would have been provided tax relief, uh, for school construction for any district that participates in SCAP or the School Construction Assistance Program, which would be almost ninety percent of districts, but there's a handful, uh, that would have been excluded from that benefit, uh, including Mercer Island. Uh, I don't know, um, what happened in the house other than that it died. Um, after some questioning, particularly by Representative Callen, uh, who sort of pressed on the point that I had of why it was tied to the School Construction Assistance Program. Uh, it seemed that under the proposal, most districts were included and it was just unnecessary red tape and frankly, a little bit punitive to some districts that are perhaps seen as having a higher tax base, even though much higher construction costs. Uh, we're optimistic that going into next year, there might be some appetite to take that up again, but then just make it as simple, um, as well as equitable, uh, policy that extends across the board and it's just tax relief for all districts, um, irrespective of participation in SCAP.
And the tax relief of basically waiving sales tax.
Would be roughly ten percent. So significant.
So we might be coming to the city to ask for advocacy on, on that, should that come forward to the, the others. All our taxpayers would save that.
We're happy to do it. You know, we're, I think we got a pretty fine tuned machine that runs down in Olympia all session long and we have great connections. So if there's a bill or two that is really a highlight of your session and you want some support around it, if it makes sense, we'll be happy to go. And some ears on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So open it up, uh, for council board to talk about the different projects everyone has planned.
Quite a bunch today.
Well, we'll layer in the next topic, which kind of goes into it, which is fleet electrification. And, um, maybe talking a little bit about what we've, uh, done so far with our bus fleet, uh, what we have planned as we move forward. And so why don't I start with, um, uh, Patrick Rock, he's our Director of Transportation, uh, coming to us from Colorado, beautiful state, the great state of Colorado. Um, and so, Pat, do you want to talk a little bit about the journey we've been on, uh, where we are, where we're going?
Sure. We actually started looking into this, uh, three years ago. And, uh, we had some electrical engineers come out to our current lot and look at the infrastructure we had and kind of try to figure, help us figure out with the current, uh, structure of our bus lot, what kind of, uh, charging scenarios could we bring to our, our purchasing new bu- new, uh, school buses? And basically we found out that we had in our current electrical infrastructure, we had enough space for four, uh, vehicles. Uh, we have ordered two of them. We've had two of those vehicles banned operating on routes this last year. Uh, we're learning a lot about, uh, what it takes to run those and you, what, uh, you know, it's a learning curve. Uh, and what it takes to keep them charged up. Uh, we have two more coming in August. But we're at a point where, uh, to do any more electrification or get any more electric, uh, electric vehicles in our fleet, we actually have to bring in some infrastructure. We've been meeting with electrical engineers, uh, we've hired one and uh, we're working with Puget Sound Energy to come up with a plan to actually totally revamp our lot and bring in some transformers, uh, that would allow us to fully electrify, electrify our fleet. We know that, uh, last year, uh, the, uh, legislator allowed, uh, the transportation levy funds, some of that to be used for this kind of expense, which it had never done that in the past. And so, you know, we have avenues of raising money. We have avenues of coming up with money. We're just in the process of, okay, trying to figure out, okay, what is it going to cost and what's the best way to do it? Uh, you know, you can come in and do it in sections and is that more advantage, uh, a bigger advantage than doing it all at one thing? And so, uh, we're trying to find those answers right now. Uh, but like I said, as we, by August of next year, we'll have four electric big buses running around the island and working every day. We're a unique place where most of our routes, uh, they fit the electric bus perfectly because most of our routes are forty miles to fifty miles a day or less every day. And, uh, a charge for electric bus, for big electric buses is about a hundred miles, uh, on a full charge. Any other questions? Any others that you want me to talk about?
Other question. So, uh, you mentioned that, uh, the lot currently is sufficient for, in size for the four uh, electric vehicle buses that you're planning to bring in. Uh, I believe you said that there's a desire to expand, uh, to have enough of a charging facility for the entire fleet, which I presume means, uh, medium-sized vehicles as well as passenger vehicles and vans, uh, not, not just the, the buses, but I presume eventually uh, that, uh, the intent is to, uh, uh, swap out most, if not all, uh, of the, uh, of the gas powered buses. Is that correct?
That's, uh, that's my understanding of the process, although I think there'll be a bigger focus, focus on the school buses, whether they be large buses or small buses in the mean. I think, you know, one of the things that we're looking for replacement vehicles, we've got a lot of old gas vehicles in Mercer Island, uh, you know, some of the vans are nineties, ninety-five, ninety-six, uh, nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six. And we're looking at replacing those as we go on. The good thing is most of our, uh, vehicles are low mileage. Uh, so, you know, we can, we can run them, but they're pretty old. But it's hard to get new, uh, new diesel truck or no diesel trucks, new elect, uh, excuse me, unleaded trucks, new unleaded vans. Right now there's just a shortage of it. But we do see, uh, opportunities for new electric vehicles, but you know, they're, they're more than double the cost right now for a, a school district van.
A case in point, like one of our larger buses, a little over three hundred thousand dollars. The cost of electric, you're looking at five hundred and fifty thousand. So significant uptick in price.
I presume that the, uh, the smaller vehicles, uh, are the ones that are probably going to, uh, approach parity with, uh, between gasoline and electric before the larger vehicles, uh, right?
I think so, yes. That'll receive right now. Okay.
I presume that the, uh, the small and mid-sized vehicles, um, on the island, uh, are going to be subject to the same requirements statewide of everything, everything new at least being electric, uh, by twenty thirty-five. So I presume that's kind of the easy path that those are going to become electric because we won't have the option. And I think, uh, gas vehicles, at least when the ones that are, that we currently have, um, uh, uh, reach end of life, uh, and need replacing.
Maggie Tay?
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to, to note that, um, our thinking has been that, that we may always need to have like at least one, you know, diesel bus for, available for athletics because, um, just if we, if we're driving kids like pretty far across Eastern Washington in the winter, when charge doesn't hold as long or gets used up more by heat or AC or whatnot, um, that, that, that needs to remain an option to the extent that that's possible.
One of the things that, um, it has come through the last legislative session, but we're waiting on all the final details is if what we can count as a vehicle that transports students or not. And that's important to us because then that will determine whether or not we can use the depreciation schedule. Getting a little over my skis is annoying to hear a house. Um, but to use the depreciation schedule, then reimburse it from the state to purchase new vehicles. Right now it's really defined to just buses, but we transport students and vans and other vehicles. And so as we're thinking about that replacement, those replacement costs, we're trying to get some, some legislative help on what we can count, uh, in that regard. Don't I fill in the gaps?
I think you have it.
All right. And passed. Um, and so also on the depreciation schedule, um, you know, it's been some number of years since we've run a transportation level. And boards have considered over the last six, uh, years or so, and we've really determined that we don't need to go out to our community for a transportation levy at this time. Because of the depreciation schedule, we've been able to maintain our buses, keep them on schedule. And then that schedule is basically subsidies back from the state to reimburse us so that we can purchase new buses, um, along the way. Um, we'll see how long, but right now, um, our team's done a really nice job with that.
I guess one of the things to piggyback off of that is when it came to the House Bill thirteen sixty-eight for electric buses, it prioritizes those districts that have, uh, buses that are two thousand and seven or older. Our oldest bus is two thousand and eleven, so we don't benefit from any financial, um, incentives from the state. Uh, most districts were one of the few that in the past has run a transportation levy. Uh, most districts do not. Uh, so it's sort of, in a way like there's some odd sort of positioning, right? That you have communities that are maybe some of the most supportive of electric vehicles, but the incentives at the state level is if we want an electric bus, we need to ask our taxpayers to fund that. And other communities at the same time, I don't. And I think that disconnect, uh, particularly when some of the communities that are more hesitant, whether it's because they have longer distances to travel, it's colder weather, electric buses might not be as suited. Um, you know, they might not have the support for the buses, but they're getting the funding. And then you have the opposite here where you have, I think, support, but no funding.
Does Wendy, does that mean?
That, yeah.
Secret code of the city sounds.
Uh, I'm going to take us up a notch from electrification because I know how complicated is on the maintenance side, the fleet side, the acquisition side, the rate payer side. And just say, I am such a proud parent in this school district. My kids graduated here years ago and are now gainfully employed after college. I credit this community and I credit the school district for their success and my sanity of a parent because we couldn't have done it without the community that we have here with all the different ways our kids can get engaged between band and drama and sports and moms checking out, kids walking down the street at midnight and saying, hey, I saw Henry walking down. We have that mom, mommy and I am so proud of that. We're going to keep my kids going. And, um, that said, I'm a little bit further removed from the school district now. And I know COVID sent us all into a frenzy and I'm just curious if you could give us an update on kind of what the biggest challenges are. I'm hearing open enrollment. I'm hearing, you know, special ed, I'm hearing fentanyl. Um, I'm also hearing all the great things, right? The programs are back, parents are back. Like, can you just give us sort of the three minute pitch on what's awesome and what, what we're struggling with and what we need to remember with representatives trying to support our community, our schools and our city and all the whirling issues that are here for all of us, like the highest level, what's happening?
I think, um, you know, thank you for saying all of that. Um, it, it's fun to, to watch, you know, those in the generation ahead of our kids, you know, and what they're doing out in the world now. And, um, and, and very much, I mean, I think that there are so many things to be proud of. And then, you know, when you're in the mix of it, that's when you kind of hear these like, you know, don't make any changes. So our staff is amazing. Um, they dedicate their, they've dedicated their careers to taking care of our kids and raising our kids with, alongside us. Um, from, from, you know, the, the bus drivers who pick them up first thing in the morning to, to our one employee is Fred in the, in the district. You know, really working to make every decision with students as the priority. And that's from the big decisions to the little decisions. It's really what we kind, we come back to is how is this impacting our students? Um, you know, we, we tend to, we tend to kind of lose our minds when we're talking about some big things that maybe we haven't done before. I know your kids were at the age when, last time we did open enrollment. So I hate to kind of focus on what the issue is of the moment because that really isn't our, our students' experiences. You know, they're watching the adults go a little bonkers, but I think our students are doing really well. Our, they're thriving. They're, um, you know, we constantly make curriculum changes. Um, in order to make decisions where we can best meet the needs of our students. Um, our elementary schools have gone through curriculum changes for both, um, language arts and, um, math in the last two years. So they, the teachers there have done heavy lifts in terms of learning and teaching new curriculums. Um, two years in a row, which we really don't want to do, but we got delayed because of COVID. So we really needed to get those things in place. We're seeing some really good results. The test scores we've gotten so far is where our, um, our, our special education students are outperforming the general education students in the state. Um, and so we're really seeing some tremendous benefits from those new curriculums. Our students are, um, because we're so students focused, we're allowing, allowing, giving them the stage to choose their opportunities. Um, really learn, uh, you know, find their passions, whether it's, you know, the youngest in kindergarten all the way through our high school where they're running their hundreds of clubs, they're performing arts, our band at the Macy's Day Parade. Um, and, you know, in, I mean, in, um, our communications, if hopefully if you're not on Facebook as part of our group and Instagram, um, he's constantly posting updates and the awards our students are receiving and the activities, the national awards, the international awards. Um, but also the participation, you know, one of the things that we've talked about is I want to hear from our students in terms of what, what skills are they gaining from being involved in these things? What leadership opportunities do they have? We have just had students come back from Kenya who were there over mid-winter break, um, who raised money to, um, give, provide scholarships for high school girls in Kenya where it's not mandatory education, it's private. And so, um, you know, they're doing amazing things. There are, this Gen Z is amazing. Um, and they really are, um, they're, they're the reason we do all we do. So, you know, I think it's really successful. Are there always going to be challenges? Of course, there's always going to be challenges. And, and I think that, um, I think that the, uh, sign of a good system is one that is always questioning, how can we be doing better? And that's what we do with the open enrollment. Our finances are good. They're improving. You know, we really went, we went through the struggle, the financial struggle really a couple of years before everyone else, but the lack of us or dollars and and the enrollment declines. We knew it was coming. It hit all at once. It really impacted us. We made changes. Um, Fred, we, we brought on Fred. We, Fred brought on a new finance team that's really, um, taken a look at, you know, rebuilding that, that fund balance in a very, um, fiscally responsible way that allows us to support our staff and our programs. Um, in as much of a meaningful way as possible, you know, we're still by, we're losing money every year from the state in terms of our dollar goes shorter and shorter, but, but our team is amazing. And, um, I think that as we, um, you know, move forward, we, we, we could rest on our laurels and just say, oh, you know, everything's fine. We've got smaller enrollments. We're going to have to cut some classes. That's just the way life is. That's not good enough for us. So we're always going to challenge ourselves to explore other ways to do things. Is everything we choose, you know, are we going to be successful always? No, but you know, we're not going to be successful if we don't try to. So, so that's the goal. And, um, you know, hopefully there's enough trust. We, we work really hard to do our part to raise property values for the city. I think we're doing a good job of that. Um, and we'll do, and we'll make every attempt to continue to do that. Obviously, that's an external look at it. We do it for our kids, but but it is. And, you know, what I love is hearing you talk, it's exactly my senior, which is crazy, I know. But, um, but we talk about, and it's the same thing. It's our village is that after this, I'm going to meet with the gang to talk about graduation parties. So you know, it's like, you know, these generations and we all come back to it and then your kids are going to move back to the island with, and raise their kids. And it's why we, it's why this community is so special, like, like, like what Dave did too. So, um, it's why the, our community is so special and, um, and so thank you for recognizing that. And anytime you want to come hang out at the school, we can arrange for visits for you to see what's going on. Um, or special events and, um, I did a lot of talking there without giving a ton of specifics, but, but things are good. I mean, like, like what our president says in the State of the Union, I think the state of our schools is very good and we work every day to make them stronger.
And Maggie Tay, I'll go have a few, um,
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to um, add to what Deborah was saying, that one of the things that that would maybe be different for you, Wendy, if you visited, say, the high school right now, is that um, the staff at the high school have really put a lot of work into developing kind of new pathways, like kind of tracks through the high school where if a student is interested in a particular topic, let's say like the environment, there's like now a series of classes that they can take. So it's not just like a one-off class that they can take. So we have a marine science class that looks really fantastic. And we have a class in that I think is an AP class, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, that's about like human impact on the environment, kind of the history of how humans have impacted the world. Um, and uh, and so it's like, I I think that that in the changing landscape of college admissions, it's like, it it it's but it's two things. It's like in the changing landscape of college admissions, but also in the changing landscape of like what is expected of our kids once they graduate and move on to higher education and then move on to the working world? That um, people are kind of learning and pulling information together in different ways now. And so, you know, to be like, oh, I'm a person who cares about the environment, you know, so I've read some books and I took one class, right? That's different from like, this is my passion. I have pursued this across a span of years. You know, it kind of like, here's my whole story and here's like, it's a coherent kind of story for the students themselves. We also have, in addition to our regular drama classes, we now have a great theater tech class um, that I've just heard like fantastic things about, you know, so a lot of those like CTE classes. It's just been very thoughtful how that, those courses have been developed and how the curriculum has been chosen for them. And and I think that on the flip side, those are some of our less subscribed classes right now because they're new and because we don't have a huge high school population right now. So I think that that's, there's some of the concern about having to cut um, you know, three FTE at the high school is that the classes that would be hit the heart of us would be some of those new classes that people have just put like a tremendous amount of work into developing. And so that to me is the biggest difference in what's going on at the high school now versus even like four years ago, five years ago.
So I think at a thirty thousand foot level, I mean, the first that's our district is encountering, but every district and state in the country is demographics and declining enrollment. I mean, how that's going to play out over the years. Uh, my view is we need to clearly identify the challenges and then to address those with pragmatic solutions. A second is the role of technology, uh, particularly there's a term that I think is now fairly common of referring to kids that just interact with their iPad is iPad kids and balancing both the promises of technology, but also the perils. Uh, on the positive side, there's a recent story, I think it was on Friday, PBS's NewsHour, a brief but spectacular uh, uh session or article story on the use of AI in New York City Public Schools to improve writing. So there's certainly benefits. But it's a double edged sword, I think, with technology. Three is upheavals in sort of pathways upon graduation. In particular, the expectations of colleges that have been changing and more volatile with respect to test scores. Um, as well as what courses they they expect. And so I think that creates a lot of anxiety with students when there is uncertainty of of what tests in terms of uh, that schools are looking for. Uh, fourth, particularly post McClery, um, regionalization and how funding uh, is allocated in a more centralized model um, that was a a fight. Uh, it had been by any end last year. I think that is going to continue to be a challenge. Um, our state is fairly unique in the amount that comes from the state. It's the fourth most. Um, and we also have significant cost of living differences across the state. So what's a pragmatic way to address that? Um, and then the last one, which you know, I think is unique to Mercer Island, but how it plays out changes over time, is recognizing we live in a unique community. And how is that reflected uh, in the courses and programs? And how do we continue to reassess that? And make sure that it's in line uh, with what the community expects and wants and that we're always, you know, mindful of that.
Ken?
Yeah, well, I wanted to get closure on the previous topic of the uh, electric vehicles. Uh, the uh, interloper agreements that uh, we have in place enable the the city and the school district to realize significant services as well as a lot of cost savings uh, for both agencies. And with the school district's new electric vehicle charging facility that is being planned for the four buses and is planned for the the larger fleet. Um, there's an opportunity here uh, for designing something that could be used by both agencies. Uh, and I I think that there's uh, there could be a lot of savings for uh, both agencies in the process. I'm wondering, uh, is there a mutual desire between the city council and the school board to uh, create such a collaboration? So uh, would we start it here? Um, or what's, what would be the first step in doing that? Some of it's going to be, I would imagine, as your long range plan unfolds and what's in, what's part of that and then what's ours. I mean, we're going to kind of get to this next phase and then we're going to be ready to start that conversation again. So I think it's it's probably coming up. I don't know. It might be, um, you know, the mayor, deputy mayor, board president, vice president, city manager and myself talking. It could be uh, coming together again. Um, I haven't really thought about it much. I know we're not. The good thing is we're not pressed for time because we're going to kind of come up to the end. So I think we get a chance to envision that. But as you come to the end of your facility planning process, um, especially as you're thinking about your um, your fleet and and really putting more of the investment into your, um, you know, the the public work side. Uh, there'll be opportunities probably for conversation as you're going through that. I don't know if you have other thoughts.
I think it's a priority for the board. I think the question is just when is the right time to start doing that. Uh, I'm I'm confident that that our um, on the school side, that the staff is um, very clear of the board's desire, obviously, because we were, if not the first, the first to have electric buses?
No, the first in this region.
In the region. Um, and so really, and we were excited to be kind of the guinea pigs for that. So you know, it's very clear what our priorities are. And as your comprehensive plan um, is developed, um, you know, honestly, we have got elementary schools that that are crumbling, like you guys have City Hall that is so.
But they're safe.
But they're safe. They're all, they're very safe. They are very, very, very safe. They're all perfectly fitted. Sorry. The paint is dripping. Um, so you know, as part of these plans, um, I think that, you know, nothing happens quickly. So I'm confident that that our, that that Superintendent Rundle is aware of the board's, at least this current board's uh, priority in making sustainable decisions and in terms of where we're going to be heading. So those um, I I'm confident that it's going to kind of evolve organically as we all get to the place where we're going to be making those decisions. I think the priorities and desires are clear and I think that's very much the first step.
I think what I heard earlier in the conversation was that there's going to be two waves of creating the uh, charging facility. One for the four buses that both the two that are here and the two that are coming. And that's going to fill the lot. That's kind of what we have space for. Um, and that later on down the line, we're going to need a larger facility as the whole fleet is electrified. Um, so that's kind of the second phase, but it sounds like that's the one that might align well with uh, the city. Uh, because uh, we're probably going, we're going to be electrifying our our place at the same time because there's, we have faced the same twenty thirty-five uh, uh, constraint uh, that the uh, the city was facing. Is is there a uh, a particular timeframe that we need to start thinking about that? Uh, like in the twenty thirty timeframe or the twenty twenty-eight timeframe or what should we talk about it next? I mean, we haven't really had, we haven't come back to that portion with our transportation um, plan. That would probably, you know, that would be the first step for us. So, you know, I don't know. We haven't really talked about that, but I'll let the board sort of like your thoughts.
You know, on it, just to be perfectly blunt, it's so far in the future that we're just trying to make sure that the facilities we have today meet the needs for our students. Um, we rely on our staff to be doing that labor work and the planning for it. Um, you know, we're all aware the legislation is going to change again and again and again between now and then. And I just wonder if talking about it too soon, years before we're ready to do it, that it's just going to change so many times that it's not fruitful. I think, like I said, I think the intention and the dedication to it is known and that we, if we are able to partner in ways that benefits our community, then then we will continue to do so.
Yeah. But uh, just adding, I think that also is, uh, we have to do our planning, but I guess that underside too, that as everybody's electrifying, Puja Sound Energy is going to be also uh, somebody that we'll have to partner. And how much have we been extra to the airline? So we just like the water, right? So we might depend on some of your decisions and you might depend, uh, so we will have to be talking more time with everyone. Uh, things have opened.
Um, Maggie, can I give something on this topic? And then I want to get to Jake, mindful of the.
Um, just on this topic, the the one question that we should probably take a a think about or look at, or at least our staff should is whether whether any remodeling or rebuilding that happens at, you know, the middle school or the high school should involve any additional charging capacity. Like since since the, since those plans, like if we're doing anything related to the stadium, for example, or anything that affects a parking lot, you know? Um, and maybe the answer is they already know and it's not fruitful or like other districts who've already like done a lot of electrification have looked at this question. The answer is you just do all the charging in one centralized place. But it it's probably worth at least just thinking about that so we don't miss an opportunity to maybe lighten the load on the central charging station if it's possible to like charge a couple buses at one school, a couple buses at another school during the day. Just a thought.
You can't see Tony nodding his head, so that definitely means they're on it. So, thank you. Um, Jake?
Yes, what are the uh, benefits uh, that are concerned to exist from open enrollment?
What are the the benefits?
Yes, because of district.
So the the key benefits of why we're in why my proposal to the board uh, next week will be eighth through twelfth grade is thinking about a couple of things, but it's really related to programs and offerings at the high school. Um, as declining enrollment happens, we're going to have to um, be remove uh, reducing staff uh, in uh, relationship to the changing enrollment. What we're trying to do is soften that blow so that it's not as sudden. Um, I'll be bringing a RIF resolution to the board along with the open enrollment at the next board meeting. And that RIF resolution will be in the neighborhood of three to three point two FTE at the high school. Um, which is about fifteen to seventeen classes. Um, so we need to start reducing, but I also don't want to reduce so fast and so much that all of a sudden we don't have some of our um, offerings that we've had in the past, especially what we call our singleton classes. Singleton classes are those that we only offer one of. Um, you know, whether or not that's a sequence of drama one, drama two or or a computer science one, two, we want to continue. And then also some of our upper level classes. Uh, for the first time in a number of years, we're actually offering calculus B C in our high school because we have enough students. My fear is if you have dwindling enrollment, um, over time, you start to jeopardize those options. So open enrollment is a way to add an influx in, but we're talking about trying not to do it just wide open. So those are some of the real benefits to program.
If you want a more detailed um, look at it, you can go to our website. Uh, Dr. Rundle did a webinar last night, Tuesday night um, on open enrollment and really has a lot of facts, figures and numbers. Um, it's really helpful. It'll give you a one hour kind of look at why the recommendation and why now? And the board will be discussing it um, next Thursday at our meeting.
Thank you.
All right. I want to respect everyone's time. Um, thank you all so much for joining us. Um, we look forward to to collaborating in the future and then hopefully meeting next year again to uh, give each other updates and see each other, be in the same room and uh, enjoy your evening.
Casey, is there anything you need to do to adjourn?
Oh, okay. So I just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, I'll be favor.
Hi.
And it's five oh, and we are adjourned at six oh four.